Good evening. Tonight is Monday, January 6th and we do have a quorum so I will call this meeting to order. The first order of business is agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will vote to approve our agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tonight's agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review tonight's agenda for us in the community?
Absolutely Chair Gibler. So tonight we have excellence in action and really excited to be able to hear from students and staff families. I don't know if there are members of the public that would like to speak. If there are, we'll hear from members of the public. You have a consent agenda. And we have a discussion related to our audit from last year. MMKR will be here along with Director Woodard. And then we're going to get an update about student support services programming from Director Remzing. You have several items that you'll take action on. Again, the audited financial statements, the electric school bus acquisition, our secondary courses, English, English arts, year two recommendations for curriculum, secondary courses, general change recommendations, so new courses, general change, and international travel. The Legislative Action Committee is bringing forward their priorities for final approval. And then we have several policies that are up for final approval. You'll be provided with leadership and committee updates, my updates, and we will adjourn and note that there are several items under information.
Thank you. Alright, moving on, we have our excellence in action. And this month's excellence in action will feature Principal Dr. Kara Rickenberg and some of the amazing students at Highlands Elementary. Highlands Elementary celebrated a 20-year anniversary in December with Impact Day. The full Highlands community, students, staff, and family volunteers gathered for a full day of packing meals. These meals stay within Minnesota, providing nourishment for those in need. Highlands students, staff, and parent volunteers are here to share more information about their Highlands Impact Day. So come on up. And we also have Ms. Messica, one of our CP teachers and teacher leader of this effort. Would you go ahead and introduce yourselves to us?
Let's see here. Here we go. Hi, I'm Kara Rickenberg. I get to be the principal of Highlands.
Hi, my name is Nyla and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Riley and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Ayla and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Kendall Messica and I am a CP 23 teacher at Highlands. Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to start, if you can indulge me on the next slide, I'm going to start a little bit on the history of Impact Day. Oh, is this the clicker? Perfect. While we're figuring that out, I'll just keep going. Oh, excellent. Alright, so the history of Impact Day. I'm self-indulgently going to talk a little bit about my two children Connor and Logan, who are now 22 and 25 and attended Highlands Elementary. Impact Day was their favorite day of the year. They still talk about it. As a matter of fact, that's Connor up there. They still do their best to come back, though they live in Chicago, to help out with the day because it's just meant a lot to them. They would have lemonade stands in the summer to start saving money, even though the day didn't start until December. And I've found out that this is not an isolated incident. I got a call from a student at Edina High School a couple of weeks ago, who's a photographer for the Zephyr, and she shared that she went to Highlands. It was her favorite day of the year. And she wanted to come back and do a photo story of it, which is now on the Zephyr's website. And she's a truly talented photographer, so if you have a chance, you can check that out. But we also hear this same message from other students over the years, since we've been doing it for 20 years. And we just feel passionate about giving these students the gift of giving and hoping that this is a lifetime desire. More importantly, it's a very student-led event. And we have three of our fabulous Impact Day ambassadors. We have fourth and fifth graders who come and do weekly presentations for all of the classes in the five weeks leading up to Impact Day. They work really, really hard on this. And I'd love if you could share a little bit about what you do as an ambassador or what you enjoy about it.
I really enjoyed getting to talk to the younger kids because it's just like the way like I could answer their questions made me feel really like independent and happy. And we could present to the parent volunteers at the end, which made me feel really responsible.
Something that makes me enjoy being ambassador is that like I get to like to go to different classrooms and like teach them about Impact Day.
One thing I liked about being an ambassador is that I got to be a voice for people that are experiencing food insecurity.
One of my favorite things about the ambassadors is the dedication that they bring to the project. And it's not just the presentations that they do in the classrooms, but it's the conversations that I hear them having in the hallways and the leadership that they bring for all of our students, kindergarten through fifth grade.
Yeah, they do put in an amazing amount of work and we so appreciate it. So many different groups help to make the day possible. And we just, it's a huge undertaking, as you can imagine, so we so appreciate that. And in a moment, we're going to be watching a video, but I want to highlight a few things in that video before we do. One of them is just that this is a really unifying event because kindergartners through fifth graders all get to participate. And it's hard to find something school-wide that all students can meaningfully be a part of. We also get over 150 family volunteers that come in and help us the day of. And our ambassadors are back at work again because as the different shifts come in, they do a presentation to teach the adults what their jobs are for the day, which is really fun. And one of them asked me if they got to boss their parents around. So they were excited about that. But should we go ahead to the video? Alright.
And definitely a highlight of the two days was hearing 570 kids scream out the students' names as they appeared
To celebrate our success, we always share what we accomplished the day of. And our ambassadors lead an assembly and share. If you guys want to start by sharing how many boxes of food we packed. And I should mention that we pack oatmeal that stock local food shelves. That's what our project is. Go ahead. Do you want to share how many boxes?
We did 176 boxes, which equals...
1,049 bags.
And what was our goal?
15,000.
15,000. Come on clicker. How many meals?
So in addition to celebrating that amazing success and just huge accomplishment, this was a special year because as you mentioned, it was the 20th anniversary of this. So I sat down with a former retired Highlands teacher that used to be very involved in Impact Day. We crunched some numbers to figure out how many meals that equals over the course of the 20 years. Yes, until something happens? Well, spoiler alert, we figured out that that's well over a million meals in that 20 years that Highlands students have been able to pack, which in and of itself is a huge accomplishment. But I think one of the things that's really exciting is to think about the multiplying effect of all of the students that have been inspired to move forward and do good in middle school, do good in high school, do good beyond that. And so that's really what our hope for this event is, is not just the amazing ability to feed so many people, but to help create lifelong enthusiasts of caring and giving. Do you want to add anything?
If anybody has any questions for our students or...
Well, it's been about six or seven years since I did Impact Day at Highlands with my student. I remember it vividly because having to put the hairnet on, and I didn't have it on correctly at one time. And I got told by at least three people that I wasn't doing it correctly. Did any of you have your parents join you on the volunteering? Yeah. So what did your... No, okay, so for you, your parent, they volunteered. What did you have them do?
Um, well, we had them all work at the table and like help anybody that like is having troubles with anything.
Was the hardest part the scale?
Uh, it's probably the sealer.
The sealer, right. Oh yes, right. That you had to put it there and go through. Ah, right, exactly. Excellent. Well, I'm so impressed that Highlands continues this wonderful tradition for the next generation to come forth. And congratulations on contributing to the 1 million meals packed. It's a wonderful accomplishment. I hope that you guys are very proud of yourself. Thank you.
Thanks you Highlands. Thank you so much for coming. And if you want, you're welcome to come here and parents can take a picture of them.
Thank you again for having us.
Alright, we do not have any members... All right, we do not have any members of the public who would like to speak to us this evening, so we will continue on with our agenda. We are moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, then we will vote to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. All right, moving on to our discussion items. Our first item is our audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. And I'd like to invite up Mert Water, our Director of Finance and Operations, and Bill Lauer from MMKR. Welcome.
Good evening Chair Gabler, members of the school board, those in attendance with us tonight, Dr. Stanley. Tonight, we're joined by Mr. Bill Lauer, Principal and Partner at MMKR, now known as LB Carlson, and he'll be here with us tonight to review the results of our fiscal year 2024 audit. Before I turn it over to Mr. Lauer, I'd like to make a few remarks. First of all, I'd like to extend my thanks to the members of the business office who helped prepare the audit. Even though we know that there's an audit coming each school year, it is a significant undertaking, so I'd like to thank them for their diligence in preparing that audit. Second, while this is the first time that the public and full school board will see the results of the audit, various drafts of this information have been reviewed with the Finance Committee at our November and December meetings, as well as the full public as part of our five-year financial forecast. The results of the fiscal year 2024 financial operations were used as the base year of deriving that forecast. Lastly, the, this audit will be submitted to the Association of School Business Officials International for consideration of their Certificate of Financial, um, Certificate of Reporting and Financial Excellence Award, which we did receive for our fiscal year 2023 audit. The plaque is hanging at the entrance of the school board for those who would like to examine that. Without further ado, Mr. Lauer.
Thank you, Mert. Good evening Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for making time for me on your agenda this evening. What I'd like to do this evening is kind of quickly accomplish three things. First of all, I'm required to make sure that you, as a body that oversees the financial reporting process for the district, understand what our role is as auditor. Secondly, I'm going to go through the results of the audit and the various opinions we issue, and then finally, I'll just touch on a few of the very high-level financial results for the year under audit. So, there we go. So I will start by talking about our role, and making sure that you understand that management is responsible for all of the data and disclosures that go into making up your annual financial statements, which are the primary document that you receive. In your board packets this evening, we come in and audit that information to provide an opinion as to whether it fairly presents the district's financial position and results for the year under audit. In addition, because the district annually earns more than $750,000 in federal awards, you're subject to a separate audit of those single audit, of those, um, excuse me, federal award expenditures, it's more of a compliance audit. Then, you'll see separate report letters that we issue, or required to look at your internal controls and compliance as part of that financial statement audit, as part of that federal single audit, you'll see separate report letters issued for each of those. And finally, you're subject to an audit of your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. There's a audit guide that the state auditor's office puts out and updates each year for the various local government entities, so we audit to that and issue a report letter on that. As far as the results of the audit, once again, this year, we issued what we refer to as an unmodified or a clean opinion on your financial statements. Once again, this year, because what fun would it be if we didn't get to change something, we are calling out there is a change to the financial statements you're looking at this year. There was some, uh, Governmental Accounting Standards Board guidance that kind of changed something that they tried to change a couple of years ago, with regard to groups of capital assets that you're purchasing. You have a threshold over which you capitalize assets, and a few years ago, they put some guidance out suggesting that if you're purchasing large groups of assets, even when they're below that threshold, you should consider capitalizing those as well. And basically, everyone kind of ignored that, so they updated that guidance and said you will do that. So you had to implement that this year. So you're going to see an adjustment of a little under a million dollars was added to your capital assets and your investment in, in capital assets, only under government-wide financial statements, this doesn't affect your fund financial statements at all. As far as internal control and compliance with your financial statement audit, it was a clean report this year, no control issues to note, no compliance findings. As I mentioned, we issue a separate opinion on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. We opine that those are fairly stated in relation to your overall financial statements. We also, as I mentioned, issue a letter with regard to internal control over compliance and federal compliance. We did have one thing to report here, you had a deficiency in your controls over suspension and debarment. This is kind of a requirement, anytime you're going to spend over $25,000 with any vendor that's involving federal funds, you have to go out to a website and make sure that that vendor is not suspended or debarr'd, in other words, that they're eligible to do business and participate in contracts where you're spending federal dollars. You also have to keep that documentation on hand, so, one of the two that we tested did not have that documentation kept. And then for Minnesota legal compliance, we had three things to report this year. The first one, this has been a finding the last couple of years, and that is timely payment of claims, you're required to pay any vendor claim within 35 days of the receipt of goods or services, or the invoice for goods or services, whichever is received later. The issue here is primarily getting those invoices that are being received out at your various school sites, approved and into the business office, so they can still get that paid timely. Everything, once it's hitting your business office, is getting paid very quickly, but some of those invoices being received by various teachers and that out in the buildings are not getting to the business office to pay timely. The second one is an unclaimed property report. Annually, you're supposed to be submitting any general disbursement checks that are older than three years, or payroll checks that are older than one year to the state, along with a reporting form that you're supposed to file. You did have some payroll checks that were more than a year old when we did the audit that had not been submitted to the state, so that's something that should be happening annually. And then the final one, in your contracts that involve labor for construction, if you're using subcontractors, the contract between the district and the primary contract contractor has to include language that the subcontractors will be paid timely, which is within 10 days of the contractor receiving the payment. And this is something where it's kind of a one-size-fits-all statute, that doesn't necessarily, hasn't been updated, or doesn't suit every, every way that these payments are being processed, but regardless, in your case, you're kind of having your construction manager make those payments, but even if that's the case, that language is required to be in those contracts, it's kind of just a matter of getting that boilerplate language into all of those contracts whenever you have subcontractors involved. That was everything as far as the opinions that we issued. I'll just pause here for a minute to ask, are there any questions on anything that I've covered so far?
I think the only question I'd have really quick is that, of the, of the corrections that we needed to make, were there, was there anything that you've seen in the last few years that has a kind of pattern of anything like this? I don't remember there being this many corrections from last year.
The one that, that has been a finding for a couple of years is the timely payment of claims, and that was kind of the same cause, where it was the timeliness of getting them from the various buildings to the business office to pay. Other than that, no, I don't think there was anything that I would call a pattern.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Director Bourbon to add to the response from Mr. Lauer. Yeah, the 35-day prompt payment is one that we certainly wanted here, too. We have put in some electronic systems in place to help to alleviate that concern. Of course, there's a human element involved as well, and so we're trying to redirect invoices from being sent to sites, rather, sent centrally to a, an accounts payable email address, so.
All right, with that, then I'll move on to some of the kind of high-level financial results for the year under audit, which is, and the year ended June 30, 2024. This graph shows, just to give you some context of where your district's fund balances are compared to some statewide data. This shows a 10-year history of your unrestricted general fund, operating fund balance, so this percent of your annual operating expenditures, this isn't the measure you use when you're looking at your budget, but this gives me an opportunity to show you how you compare kind of to some statewide data. For your district, in, at the end of 2024, your unrestricted fund balances totaled about almost 17% of your general fund expenditures. You have historically retained a lower fund balance level than the statewide average, don't have comparative data statewide for 2024 yet, but the previous year-end, that was about 21% statewide. Another thing that we track... Got a head one. There we go. Another thing we track year to year is the number of students that you serve for aid, this drives a lot of your funding formulas, in particular, your general education formula. You served about 8,540 students in terms of average daily membership for 2024, with the various weightings applied to the different pupil levels that converted to about 9,351 pupil units. That was down about 42 from the year before, a decrease of about half a percent. You did have fairly large increases in both 2022 and 2023, where you were up about 1.5% to 2.5% each year, but that kind of leveled off in 2024. The next graph here shows a 10-year history of your general fund financial position at year-end, over the last 10 years, in terms of your year-end cash balance and fund balance. Your total cash investments in the general fund at the end of 2024 was about $52 million. The fund balances totaled about $26.5 million. That was an increase of roughly $6 million from the year before, about 4.8 million higher than your final budget. This table shows some of the numbers behind those fund balances, the different components you report for fund balance. As I mentioned, the total of 26.6 million you see there is broken down into five different components. You got a small amount of non-spendable fund balances, which is essentially your inventory prepaid, there's still assets to the district, but they're no longer liquid, you can't spend them for something else. You had about $6.2 million in restricted fund balances, these are primarily the state-mandated funding restrictions that I'm sure you're used to seeing when you go through budgets. Most of that, about 5.3 million is related to capital, operating capital, or capital projects, levies, dollars that you have yet to spend. At about another, almost 600,000 in staff development, and about another $390,000 in some smaller restricted buckets. You also have, then, the unrestricted fund balances are committed, assigned, and unassigned, those are essentially controlled at a local level. Committed are fund balances that you have decided at a board level to earmark for particular purposes. In this case, that commitment is your 2% cash flow commitment that the board has set, that 2.5 million roughly. The assigned fund balances are things that are either earmarked by the board, or by your designated finance department personnel there for various purposes. You've got about $8.6 million in assigned fund balances at the end of the year. The bulk of that, roughly 5 million, is for separation and severance benefits. You also had just under $2 million in budget carryovers for different sites that weren't spent during the year, and about another 1.8 million for various things, including programming, paid family medical leave, unemployment leave. We've got a couple of ratios that we track there, what these, those unrestricted fund balances are as a percent of your annual expenditures, and that unassigned fund balance, just to kind of show you the trend, you did have a fairly significant increase this year, so you're seeing those ratios going up. Your policy calls for maintaining an unassigned fund balance between 6% and 10% of your subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. For the district at the end of 2024, that was about 7.4%. Your general fund revenues were just under 161 million for the year, that's where the bulk of the variance to budget came from, you were about $5.5 million over budget, mainly in two areas, your state aids were about $2.5 million higher than budget, primarily in special education state aid, a little bit also in general education aid. And then other revenues here, which includes interest income, that's about half of that, and then you've got donations, student fees, tuition rentals, where you budget very conservatively for those kind of non-recurring revenues. So that was about another $2.5 million in that variance between those two items. I should mention, your investment income does include both interest that you've received and the change in market value of your investment portfolio, which you don't realize until you actually sell those investments, but you do have to mark that to market each year, so that will vary with the market, and you did have a, a good bounce back year in the market in 2024. On the expenditure side, you spent just over $150 million in the general fund in 2024. You're about $2, $2.25 million under budget. Most of that was in two areas, purchase services were just under $2 million below budget, some of that was special, or special education, I'm sorry, over budget. Special education and transportation costs were higher than budget, and also, purchase services and capital outlay were over budget for projects, and this is partly because of how you budget for your long-term facility maintenance dollars. Smaller projects get run through the general fund, larger projects have to get accounted for in your building construction capital projects fund, so you make a transfer for those larger projects. So you did spend about a million and a half more on those projects in the general fund, but your transfer to the, your building construction fund was lowered by that same amount because of where those projects were accounted for. Briefly, some of the other funds that the district maintains, your food service special revenue fund, annually, you spend about $4 million in this fund. You ended the year with a fund balance increase of about $886,000, which was quite a bit more than you'd budgeted there, you'd budgeted about a $50,000 increase. So your year-end fund balance of $2 million represents close to 50% of your annual expenditures in that fund, and most of that came due to legislative funding increases, or providing free, free meals for all school-aged children, so that increased the number of meals served and the state reimbursement there. Your community service special revenue fund ended the year with fund balance of about $2.3 million. That was also an increase of about $565,000, almost $300,000 better than budget, and that year-end fund balance represents about 19% of what you spend in that fund annually. Two other funds that I don't have graphs for, just to kind of run themselves, essentially, the building construction fund, where you transferred that $5 million from the general fund for those larger projects. You spent those dollars transferred, plus some funds from bonds that you issued in 2023, to do about $18 million in improvement projects during 2024, and you have about $3.5 million left in fund balance in that fund at the end of the year. And your debt service fund, the levies and the principal... And your debt service fund, the levies and the principal and interest payments are offset each time you issue bonds. You retired about, or you paid about $14.6 million in total principal and interest out of that fund during the year. And you have ending fund balance of about $3.3 million. Then the last table I will share with you is actually a very condensed version of the first financial statement in your annual comprehensive financial report. And that's your district-wide statement and net position. This takes all of that fund information, converts it to full accruals, or bringing in all the long-term assets, long-term liabilities that you don't report in the funds. So it gives you kind of a longer-term picture of your financial position and how it changed from year to year. At the end of 2024, you had a total net position of about $12.5 million, which was an improvement of $20 million from the year before. As you can see, if you look at the top there, where it walks you through how we get from the $37.5 million in fund balances and all the funds we talked about to that net position. You've got about $294 million in capital assets, net of depreciation and amortization. And I'll remind you, that's on a cost basis. That's certainly not the replacement value of your capital assets. You also had about $200 million in bond certificates and other debt outstanding that you issued to purchase or construct those assets. Then you had about $115 million in pension and other post-employment benefits that you have to report entity-wide. And the bulk of that is your proportionate share of two statewide pension plans, the PERA and TRA pension plans that your employees participate in. Each year, they do an actuarial study and apportion any underfunding out to all of the local government units that participate in those plans. So you don't have to record that in your general fund or pay it out of there, but you do have to acknowledge that part of that underfunding of those state plans is attributable to EDIN employees that are participating in those plans. So that $115 million number that you see there is the main reason that you're showing a deficit in that unrestricted net position there, because there's no pre-funding for that liability. But you did see an improvement, both plans improved slightly in their funded position in 2024. That's typically all that I cover then, from a numbers standpoint. Anybody have questions on anything I covered there? Mert, if there's anything I didn't call out that you'd care to point out?
I think I would just say that what I was impressed about with the audit results were, when it came to our financials, it looked great. There was no comments or any revisions or corrections that needed to be done from our financial management. The corrections that were mentioned earlier were just some sort of management control elements that, while are not, something to not pay attention to, but are not specific to the actual fiscal management of the district and its assets. So it's another testament to the administration's leadership and the controls that we do have in place to take care of the taxpayers' money and to utilize it correctly for all of our strategic initiatives. So for that, it's a great audit result. And I compliment Mert and Dr. Stanley for producing that. Thank you.
Well said, Director Bourbon. I too thank you for your work. And Mert, as you mentioned at the top, your whole team deserves thanks for this. So thank you for your time this evening, Mr. Lauer.
Thank you.
All right. Then we will move on to our next item up for discussion, which is our student support services programming update. So I'll invite Director of Student Support Services, Jody Rumzing, up to talk to us this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Stanley, thank you for having me this evening to talk about the great work that's going on in student support services this year. Okay, so we have our presentation up, and I'll just jump right in. Okay, so today we're going to talk about six different areas. And it's really the pieces that fall under the umbrella of student support services. Special education, Section 504, health services, mental health, homebound and home-based services, and then also homeless, highly mobile services for students. Okay, so we'll start with special ed, which is really the biggest of all of the parts that we work with in student support services. And special education, just to make sure that everyone out there who's listening tonight has a better idea of what it is. It's instruction that is individually designed to meet the unique needs of eligible students with disabilities. And special education is provided at public expense, meets the standards of the State and Education Agency, which is really just kind of describing what the Minnesota Department of Education is, includes preschool, elementary, and secondary education. And it's provided in conformity with that student's individual education program or IEP. Okay, so one of the things that I wanted to just take this opportunity to do is just kind of look at some of our data. We talk about special education, but really, who are these special education students that we have? And so there's six years of data, and if you look at the closest column to the left, that's our current school year, and you can see it in the bottom category that we have right over, a little bit over 1,200 students. Within these categories, there's things that I just kind of wanted to show. One is that we have been increasing our numbers of special education students over the years. And you can kind of see, when you look at the bottom row, how that increase has come across. We have an increase of 284 students in our child count over the past six years, which is a 30% increase. Some of the areas that I also wanted to call out is speech language impaired. That's an area where you can see that we have just kind of a steady increase over the years in that child count. And that's something that we are working on. We currently have a plan talking about over-identification of our students with speech language disabilities. And so we're working with MTSS interventions to be able to serve student needs prior to needing special education services. And then also, we're working on our oral language specific learning disability criteria to make sure that when students are eligible for special education, that we're putting it in the right category. And then also, just our eligibility criteria, making sure that we are making decisions based specifically upon what our Minnesota eligibility criteria says. So we've started the work this year, well, last year actually, but this year we really went intensive on it. And as you can see, the gain this year is smaller than what it's been in past years. So we're hoping that next year at this time, we'll be able to see an improvement in our over-identification for that area. And the areas that are highlighted in gold, those are the areas that have been increasing the most over the years. So specific learning disability, other health disability, autism spectrum disorders, and then our developmental delay, which is our students who are in early childhood special education. Okay, and then one of the things I also want to talk about, when we look at the number of students that we have in our district and the number of students that are in special education, we have 15% of our students that are in special education. That's really in line with the state number, which is about 14%. Okay, and we can move on to the next slide. Okay, so the science of reading has been a big initiative throughout our district, and the same holds true for special education. And so one of the things that we've been working on is that our elementary special education teachers right now will have their letters training completed by the end of this school year. And then any new staff that enter into our school district will have two years from their hire date to have that training completed. All of the curriculum that we're using in special education to work with our students who have reading needs all align with the science of reading and it's evidence-based. Some of the different curriculums we're using are the Sandoz system. We use something called 95 RAP, which was formerly known as Hill Rap, Hegarty, and then also Lexia. So just wanting to make sure everybody knows that our students in special education are also benefiting from all of that training and the curriculum that aligns. Okay, we're also making sure that we are progress monitoring our students to make sure that they're making good progress. And so FastBridge is used to progress monitor all appropriate students. And the things that we're using are early reading, that really looks at our phonics and fluency for those grades K1. And then our curriculum-based measures really looks at our reading fluency at students' individual grading level, grade level, and that's students between grades two and five. I also want to just mention that FastBridge is not appropriate for all students in special education. We have students who use assistive augmented communication to communicate. And the Minnesota Department of Education is working on an alternative option for students that have those needs, so that we can progress monitor them as well. So right now, what teachers are using are curriculum-based measures. They have things like probes or running records, work samples, to make sure that students are making good progress. And so I just want you to know that while they're not using FastBridge, their progress is closely monitored. Okay, and then looking at this next slide, this really shows a blank spreadsheet. And it looks a lot better when all of the data is in it. But I'm unable to share that with you this evening, because of course, we wouldn't want to show all of our confidential information and individual student levels. But at the elementary level, all students who have reading needs are identified in the spreadsheet based upon their school. And then it lists all of the information, who is responsible for really that intervention for that student. And for some students in special education, that could be a variety of different people. Perhaps we have a student in special education who's really working hard in the general education setting, and they're having accommodations. Other students might be working with a reading specialist, and some students are working with special education teachers for their reading needs. So we're really listing out what their needs are, and we're really looking at it at a granular level at each one of our buildings to make sure that our special education students are making progress. And then this information in this spreadsheet, it's periodically reviewed during the teachers' PLC meetings along with the reading specialists as well, to make sure that students are making progress. And if not, to look at why and develop a plan to ensure that they do. The next slide is something that is information that you've all seen before. It's information about special education student progress from our data metrics plan. And in looking at our data metrics plan, what you can see, this is from the 2023-24 school year. We can see that our spring proficiency for grades kindergarten through third grade hovers between 61% and 50% for our students in special education. We can also see that aggressive growth starts out at pace in kindergarten at 16%. We consider this to be on pace, because if we were to look at like an overall bell curve, we would see that the largest amount typically is in the middle with smaller amounts on the sides. And so 16% is really what we would expect to see for students making that aggressive growth. And then by the time that students are in grades two through five, we have almost 63% of our students making aggressive growth, which is higher than the 52% in special education. And so it's just truly remarkable, the type of progress that both our general education and our special education students are making. Again, when you think of a bell curve, you really don't think of 63% of our students making aggressive growth. So that's something that we're really proud of. Okay, now we'll just turn to our secondary students and the type of progress they're making. And so secondary is one year behind elementary, just because the district initiative was really to start with elementary are students who are just now learning to read. And so our secondary teachers are well on their way towards getting letters training. And we will complete that through the end of next school year. And just like elementary, all teachers that are hired on will also be getting this instruction. And so that they will be letter-certified within two years of their hire date. Some of the curriculum that we use at the secondary level is again the Sandoz system, that 95 RAP. We use Achieve 3000, which is a nine-through-12 supplemental reading curriculum. And then also the language curriculum, which is a replacement curriculum that we use for students who have that need in grades six through 12. And again, all of those reading curriculums align with the science of reading and are evidence-based. Okay, as we look at progress monitoring for our secondary students in grades six through nine, that's taking place there as well. We're using FastBridge to screen all appropriate students. We're using curriculum-based measures for reading fluency at their individual reading level. And it's an adaptive test, meaning that it's taken online, and it really matches that student where they're at. So if we have a student who is reading below or above grade level, the test is meeting them right where they're at. And then our common formative assessments are reviewed with ninth-grade collaborative teams through our ninth-grade teaming model. So they're getting together and going through all of that reading, all the reading data to make sure that our special education students are also included in that rich conversation taking place. And just like with elementary students, FastBridge testing is not appropriate for our students who use assistive augmented communication. And so they're not using FastBridge at this time. But again, they're still having lots of different teacher-based progress monitoring measures used. Okay, so if we take a look at this next page again, this is from our data metrics plan. This time, we're looking at our secondary students. And one of the things that you'll know is that only ninth graders are currently using FastBridge. For our 10th through 12th graders, we have a number of additional licenses that we can use on an individual basis, based upon student need. And we do that in special education. We have some students that are working on reading goals, and we're really closely monitoring that progress. And FastBridge is such a great tool to help with that progress monitoring. So those are available, and they are being used. For students in grades six through eight, when we look at the data, what we see is that we have about 53% making typical or aggressive growth. And then for students demonstrating below-grade level performance in the fall, by spring, 29% were making aggressive growth, and this is higher than general education. And again, it just reflects excellent student growth, far beyond what we would typically expect. For students in grades nine through 12, about 53% of our special education students are proficient on the MCA reading test. And for the students demonstrating below-grade level reading performance, about 16% achieve aggressive growth by spring. And again, 16% is considered on target for what we'd expect for aggressive growth to be aligned with our national norms. Okay, literacy for all, that's some curriculum that we're using for students who are in grades K through 12, who really fall under that umbrella. We were talking about students who use augmented assistive communication. While there are students who are in our site-based programs, who apply in letters methodology, it needs to be kind of, it needs to really be done in a very special way because of the level that the students are learning their reading at. And so literacy for all is a comprehensive approach to literacy that was developed by Dr. Patricia Cunningham and Dr. Dorothy Hall, and then adapted by Dr. Karen Erickson and Dr. David Copenhagener through their research at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And what's really special about these people is that they've really dedicated their career and their resource, their research to teaching students with the most severe disabilities to be able to read. And they, again, just believe that reading is for everyone. Every person is capable of reading. And so they really looked at, how are we able to do that? So we're working really closely to be able to use the curriculum that they have, the instructional practices with letters methodology, so that we can ensure that all of our students are having access to high-quality reading instruction. And so this approach is appropriate for students who have moderate to severe cognitive disabilities. They have complex communication needs. And sometimes they have multiple disabilities, which can include things like deaf, blindness, physical access, and other challenges like that. So when we're working through literacy for all, the components include shared reading, writing, self-selected reading, and then also working with words. And the work that we're doing with literacy for all right now is in partnership with Bright Works. We currently have a person from Bright Works that is going through the district and providing observations to our site-based teachers and teachers who are using literacy for all. They're also doing monthly professional development with these teachers. And they're helping us with our student progress monitoring to make sure that all of our students are making growth in literacy. Okay, this is a happy picture. So this is the polar plunge last year. And so we're going to just really dive into talking about Unified right now, because of course, we're always so proud of Unified and Student Support Services. We'll move to the next slide. So one of the things that we've worked on is all of our elementary schools joined our secondary schools in signing the Special Olympics Unified Champion School Commitment Letter this fall. And so that's been a really great thing. Our secondary schools have a long history, some of them longer than others, in being involved in Unified. And so it's really been a goal for us to be able to get our elementary also really involved. The commitment letter is really just a formal expression of our district's commitment to inclusion, acceptance, and respect for all students through the implementation of the Unified Schools Program. One of the things that kind of differs about elementary, what Unified means at elementary is a little bit different than what it means at secondary. And really, the focus on Unified is pure education on disability and also on difference, so that students right off the bat are building these strong friendships, and they're learning about those things. Our Special Education Advisory Council, many of you know, are incredibly passionate and proud of the unified work that takes place in our district. And so one of the things that they did today is they, this year, is they organized a donation to the district to be used for the purchase of books that can be used to increase awareness of disability and inclusion within their school. And the parents are really excited, because when they come to visit a classroom or they want to pull a book off the shelf, maybe to read to the classroom, they now have a selection of books to choose from. So they really feel proud and always willing and eager to support Unified efforts. Okay, so the Unified School Pillars, one of the things that I just kind of want to talk about, because there's such cool things that Unified is doing, but they really fall into under three categories. One is sports. And so within our And so within our district, we have the pillars represented through Unified Developmentally Appropriate Physical Education. We often will just abbreviate that in Special ed and call it DAP. But we have some Unified DAP classes that take place. New last year was Unified Cheer at the high school, which was really great. And then there's always an annual track and field event where all the different schools are invited out to the campus at Southview and they have a lot of fun. Also whole school engagement you'll see taking place throughout our district. That can take place through disability awareness. Some of our elementary schools have had the Pacer puppets out to really talk about disability and help with education. Bullying prevention to prevent that or reduce the amount that takes place by really having that appreciation for difference. Of course, our very cold polar plunge events that take place. Inclusion Week and Unified Assemblies. And so those are just some examples of some whole school engagement taking place. And of course, we have inclusive student leadership. And what that really means is that our students with disabilities are part of leadership opportunities that involve them versus persons without disabilities having those leadership opportunities around things that involve them. So they're participating in planning community outings. We have theater for all, Unified recess, Unified art, and then there's also Unified dance parties taking place. I've been told it's typically on Fridays. Okay, and then new this year too, we have Unified Transition, which is Project Search. And so appreciative of the support of the district and the board in allowing us to start this project this year. Our Project Search interns have completed the fourth month of their nine-month internship at Southdale Hospital. The interns are experiencing a total immersion in their workplace to acquire skills and competitive employment. And we are beginning the selection process for the interns for the 2025 school year for next year. And so that's getting started. And I just have to say that we've had other districts who are participants in Project Search reach out looking for some tips because our program is going so well. And and that is something that we just didn't expect, that it would be going just quite as well as it is. We're so incredibly proud of the program and our interns that we have out in the community. Okay, and then we have more special education initiatives that are taking place right now. They aren't getting the spotlight tonight, but we're just so thankful for all of the work that is taking place and the eagerness and willingness our teachers are demonstrating to really learning new curriculums, bringing on new things and never ever stopping trying to do the best for their students. And so some of the things that they're working on are Bridges Math. This is an early implementation for an elementary supplementary math curriculum. The teachers have started piloting the program this year and they're seeing really great results and very excited about it. One of the biggest challenges we've had is when we began the pilot was getting enough kits because so many teachers really wanted to implement it and jump on. And that's been exciting to see. Benchmark literacy. We've had two elementary special education teachers on the elementary implementation team for the district. And so I really appreciate that collaboration with teaching and learning to make sure that special education has a voice and a perspective in that curriculum as well. We have teacher training that's going to be taking place this month for Step Up to Writing. It's beginning this January for early implementers. And again, this is another situation where early implementation is proving to be challenging because so many teachers want to be able to learn our Step Up to Writing curriculum and have additional evidence-based resources to use. And so their their willingness to stay after school and get that training and and to dig in is just really, really, it's really fun to have a staff like that. We also have the Number World's Curriculum, and this is our first year of full implementation. Last year was early implementation. And this is a supplementary secondary curriculum that we use. New teacher supports. This is something that's been new this year. We have monthly professional development that we offer through a series to support teacher onboarding, performance and retention. One of the things that we've noticed is that special education hiring shortage is nationwide. It isn't unique to Minnesota, it isn't unique to Edina, it isn't unique to anyone. And so really what our goal is always is to hire the best teachers we can. And then to have them want to stay here because they feel supported, they know how to do their work. And when we hire brand-new people, we want to make sure that they feel supported in their work. And so some of the topics that we've talked about is working on special education evaluation, writing high-quality IEPs that are compliant, how to facilitate meetings, data collection and progress monitoring, extended school year, paraprofessional supervision. And then we're going to talk about school-to-school transition planning for their students this spring, transportation, preparation of the extended school year materials, and then also conflict resolution. So that's been really exciting. Another piece that we are also working on, I just got word from the printer that it's complete, so it's about to roll out. We've created a paraprofessional handbook and an online catalog of training courses so that we can also support our paraprofessionals. Once we hire these paraprofessionals, we really want to retain them. And we also want to make sure that they receive as much training as possible so that they're highly effective in their work. So because we have paraprofessionals that maybe start throughout the school year, being able to hold training opportunities that capture all of our staff so they feel well-supported and able to do their work can be challenging. And so by creating this online catalog, it allows us to ensure that we're onboarding our paraprofessionals so that they feel ready and prepared when they're working with our students. And then we have a special education teacher pipeline grant. So thankful for Dr. Anne Marie Leland writing that wonderful grant. It has allowed for twenty of our paraprofessionals within the district to pursue special education teacher licensure. And we really want to make sure that our our paraprofessionals that are going through it feel really supported and prepared as they make that transition from being a paraprofessional to a licensed a licensed person. So we have ten great mentors, each mentor is working with two mentees. And it's just exciting, I'll be walking through the hallways and I'll have paraprofessionals around to me and they're like, I'm in the program. And they want to talk to me about it and it's just really, really, really super exciting. And we have some really high-need areas that are just so challenging to hire for. And we have paraprofessionals that cannot wait to be licensed so that they can be a teacher in that area. So that's really rewarding. Okay, and that was the longest section, I promise the rest will go faster, but a lot to share about special education. Under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, I just want to share a little bit in the next slide about what what that is. Section 504 is a federal anti-discrimination statute. And protections apply to students who have a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, has a record of such impairment or is regarded as having such an impairment. And so in this picture, I chose it because we have a student giving themselves a shot. And many of our students with physical impairments like diabetes have 504 plans that would detail their medical cares. And so just kind of showing that as an example of a student. So under Section 504, we have six hundred and forty-four students in our district with 504 plans. And during the 2023-24 school year, 504 coordinators attended professional development. In February, they attended a legal update, really wanting just a case law update for all of the changes that have taken place over the years. And then in April, we did a 504 plan development and procedure professional development just so that our 504 coordinators felt really comfortable developing high-quality plans. And then you see, oh, sorry, the next slide. And then you kind of see the the graphic on the right, and that also shows kind of our common theme of wanting to make sure that our staff feel well-prepared and trained to be able to do the work that they're working on. And so we have an online course that we created from the trainings that took place last year. So when we have a new 504 coordinator that is hired into the district, or if someone wants to brush up or has a question, we have a class where they can get CEUs for taking. So that's our main update for Section 504. Okay, now we'll talk about health services and we'll move to the next slide. Okay, so health services promote the health and well-being of students and create a safe and healthy school environment. And school health services include healthcare during the school day, health education, health promotion, emergency preparedness, infection control, and then also reporting. And for the 504 plan, we showed a picture of a diabetic student, maybe, you know, getting their medical needs met. And here we have a student who hurt their head and visited the health office for unscheduled care needs. And one of the things that always amazes me is we collect data on the number of office visits that take place to our health offices. And those are some busy places. There are lots of bumps on the heads and skinned knees and Legos and noses and just all kinds of exciting things that you can imagine taking place in a health office. But we also have our health our health offices handling emergencies in addition to the routine visits. And so you can see that last year we had thirty-seven injuries resulting in student referral to medical care. We had fifteen nine-one-one calls and twelve of those were medical-related. And then we stock epinephrine for anaphylactic reactions and we used three of those last year. So that was really nice that we had those on hand for that lifesaving treatment. So we have some initiatives taking place in our health office. One of the major ones that we've worked on are our Comprehensive School Threat Assessment. We call it C-Stag. And we provided this so that all of our licensed school nurses have received the training and they can be active members of their school's threat assessment team. They all have also received opioid overdose treatment. And so all of our health office staff have been trained to recognize the signs of an overdose and to administer Narcan as needed. Also third-party billing, it's something that we're working to increase the revenue through accurate documentation of services provided to students. We're always wanting to maximize every bit of revenue we can bring in. And then just kind of a fun thing about our health services is that the community likes to provide donations to them. The Lake Harriet Masonic Lodge donated two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars to provide for some diabetic materials. And then the Minnesota Lions Club and Children's Hospital and Clinics of Minnesota also provided some screening equipment to our district. So we have some real fancy stuff due to some donations. Okay, we'll move on to mental health. School mental health services provide a full array of support and services that provide promote mental health and well-being while reducing the prevalence of mental illness. And so some of the things that we offer are counseling services, social work services, co-located services through Frazier, and then also chemical health services that we have co-located through Relate. So some of our mental health initiatives, I'll move forward to the next slide. Okay, so we have been working with the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health to attend training sessions for districts to begin preparations to third-party bill for mental health services provided by eligible providers. We have design teams that are meeting this school year to strengthen our district mental health continuum. Last year, we really did a deep dive into our mental health continuum to see areas that were going really well and then also to identify those places that we wanted to shore things up. The Minnesota Student Survey is going to be administered to students again this spring. And so that always provides really enlightening information about how our students are doing from their self-reporting. And then Prepare Training took place for all mental health providers to equip them with the skills needed to provide immediate mental health crisis interventions to students, staff and community members simultaneously exposed to an acute traumatic stressor. So our mental health providers are feeling prepared should something happen that they would be able to do that. Okay, and so now we'll move on to homebound and home-based services. And so this is something that a lot of times it's a very small group of students that it impacts, but it's it's a very important service that we offer. Homebound students have been confined to their homes sometimes by a medical authority and may receive instruction in their home. And so from time to time, we'll have a very, very ill student, perhaps a student who's fighting cancer or some other serious illness. And so they need to receive their instruction in their home. We also have students who sometimes receive home-based instruction, and that's due to an IEP decision or due to a disciplinary matter. And so typically, we provide homebound or home-based services to ten or less students a year. Okay, and we're on to our last one, talking about homeless and highly mobile students. So the McKinny-Vento Homeless Assistance Act is a federal law that provides educational rights and services to students who are experiencing homelessness. And so those those services that are provided include a free and appropriate public education, enrollment in a school immediately. And that takes place even if they're lacking the documents that are normally required for enrollment. They can be enrolled in their local school or they can continue attending the school that they last attended, which permanently housed where they were enrolled. They also receive transportation to and from their school of origin and receive educational services comparable to those provided to other students according to the students' needs. And so I think it's important sometimes in in different communities, you might think, well, maybe we don't have any students that that are homeless or highly mobile. But but we do and we have students for a variety of reasons. And so last year, we just kind of checked our numbers, we had thirty students who were experiencing homelessness that different services were provided to. And and those are the thirty that that asked for support through McKinny-Vento. Some families will say, you know, maybe I experienced domestic abuse and I'm living in a hotel right now, but I've got it okay. And so thirty students are impacted and we're able to provide supports to be able to keep them in their in their school. So really helpful. Okay, and that is the end of my presentation. I'm ready for any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Director Ramsay. Board members, what questions do you have? Mr. Mann.
Thank you, Director Ramsay. I wanted to kind of follow up just on what you're talking about with homeless and highly mobile students. And like you said, I think people don't necessarily always understand that that's everywhere and especially it's here. And kiddos are going through those kinds of issues, kiddos and their families. Can you talk to us a little bit about what that looks like from the district, if you can, without, you know, identifying anyone, obviously? What that looks like from the district side of things as far as what services you're able to help with? Or just how the district is able to to do that or what that kind of looks like for kiddos?
Yeah, so something that might happen is we might have a student who is experiencing homeless, you know, homeless. Sometimes we'll have parents who, for whatever reason, need to move out of state and or go somewhere else and the child decides to stay back. They say, I've, you know, been an Edina student all of these years and I'm going to make it on my own through graduation. So maybe they're staying at friends' homes or staying in Minneapolis, perhaps at a shelter or something like that. And what we're able to do is provide transportation to that student to wherever it is that they're staying. Sometimes they might say, well, I have a couch in Crystal, but I want to go to school in in Edina. And so it's really helpful because these students, they might have to change school just multiple, multiple times depending on where they're sleeping at night. And this allows us to change our transportation so that students are able to go to the same school and keep that continuous school experience, which is, it's really an important thing. I think without that is it is so hard to stay in school and to keep from dropping out and just all of those pieces. So we're able to put those pieces together. Also, sometimes there's additional supports that students need within the community about getting some type of resources. And we're able to work with the students too to be able to help with that. You could imagine too that a student who, you know, maybe the parents have moved somewhere else and they're trying to make it on their own. They maybe don't have the documents that they need or really know how to do it. And so we really take it from there to help make sure that that isn't a barrier and that they can stay with us. Other times too, we'll have students who maybe have lived somewhere else and now they're staying here and we find out. And then we can also help get them hooked up with the school because if a student is homeless and sleeping in Edina, of course, we welcome them into our district. But if that student says, no, no, I want to go back to my other district, I want to go where people know me, then we can work to be able to help get them set up with resources over there. A next thing about the McKinny-Vento Act is that this is something that is reimbursable expenses. So this is something that we get all of the money back that that is that it costs for the district to be able to provide those resources through through federal funds.
Director Aaron.
Thanks for the report. Just two questions for you. One is you had mentioned that there is a thirty percent increase in special education students, but we're kind of at the state average. Is is most of the state seeing that kind of increase as well? Or are we just catching up to kind of where the state is at?
So I I think there's a variety of reasons. So most the state has really been consistently about fourteen percent of your enrollment. And so we've been consistently that. Sometimes what you will see is that different 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 communities, sometimes you will have socioeconomic status and the incidence of disability can be over-identified. Sometimes you can have students of color that are over-identified. Here in our district, I know we over-identify our Hispanic Latino students as having a learning disability. And so there are pieces where you can see kind of changes to that typical fourteen percent within the district. Our our numbers really, there's there's been a large increase, but I think some some of the factors that we have is open enrollment can really affect too. Our special education programs are strong and they're popular with other communities and families seeking to open enroll.
Thanks. Second question might be more, I don't know if it's more for Mert or for you, but like you're talking about like the transportation expenses and and whatnot. And one of the purchase services line items was we were over for special education transportation services. Is that just, will that eventually catch up then when we get reimbursed for it from the federal level? Or is that just something that we we need to like forecast differently for?
So I want to confirm with Mert, but my understanding is that special transportation is a hundred percent reimbursable. And so that that will catch up with our federal funds, it just is going to take some time. And I'm getting the nod of approval.
Okay, thanks.
Director Birdman.
I had a couple of questions. Number one, on the special education front, how many non-enrolled students are we providing special services to? So they're might be attending another school, but they're a resident. And like so at a private school, we might have to provide special education services for them.
So I don't have, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that number with me today, but I will find, and I would just say that our- and I would just say that our, our enrollment has really increased. We provide two non-publics within our district, are the majority of the students. And so we have Our Lady Grace is our largest number of non-public schools that we're providing special education services to. The other is the Vail Academy, and it's a much smaller number over at a Vail. But yes, those numbers are increasing at a large, we've had to increase one special education teacher for this current school year, and their caseloads are full. So it continues to grow over at Our Lady Grace as well.
Yeah, I just felt it was necessary to make sure everyone understands that while we do, we have a number of growth within our own, but we also have responsibilities that are not our own actual enrolled students for that purpose. So thank you, I just want to make sure we clarified that.
And if I could just add another piece about it is that when we do see growth within our non-public students, we have less control really over the interventions that take place prior to that. Because one of our goals in public education is that we're providing high-quality interventions so that students who don't have disabilities aren't labeled as having a disability, that they're able to be successful as a general education student. And so we're only evaluating and labeling students who the interventions have not been able to close that achievement piece for them. We aren't able to control the interventions that take place in non-public schools or to really require that they even take place. And so I would expect that, so it's more difficult to be able to provide, it's difficult to be able to control.
From end to end.
It is, yes.
Yes, well said, I agree with that. Thank you for sharing that. I think also it's important that if, correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be wrong here, the compensation that we actually receive for those students to provide those services is not the same as a full pupil unit that we receive for an enrolled student. We get something less than that in order to provide those same services, is that correct?
We do, and I'll just make sure that I'm accurate with Mert, but we get on a shared time basis, and so we get a portion of it based upon the time that we're working with that student.
Yeah, so there's, it's not that there's not a desire to want to take care of those students and so on and so forth, that's obviously possible by the law. But then there's just the whole point of not only the financial component, but also the end-to-end result component, we don't have complete control over. That's still part of our function that we have to provide.
Absolutely, it's, we're the only state in the United States that requires that we provide special education services to our non-public students. And so it isn't a choice that we have in the state of Minnesota, it's a requirement that we have. And while we appreciate those good partnerships that we have with our non-public schools, there are challenges when we're providing services to students in non-publics because we know that special education isn't confined to a space, a special education setting. Your disability exists throughout your school day, and our ability to really control and adapt and support our students is different in a situation where those are not our employees and we aren't able to direct their work.
Yeah, great, thank you so much. A second question, while you did have in your presentation a little bit about the transition program in terms of the interns that we're doing in the work programs, and that's going really well, and it's awesome. I mean, I know we didn't really get in tonight, and I know there's going to be a presentation coming soon about sort of recommendations about what we want to do for our, taking back our own transition program for our 18 to 22-year-old students. So is there anything you'd want to say about those programs or our goals related to that and so on and so forth? Not to prejudge any future presentation, which I know is coming soon, but is there anything you wanted to kind of comment about that?
Yeah, what I would say about transition programming for 18 to 22-year-olds is it's really, it's that special space between being a high school student and being an adult. And it really helps students to be able to have the level of independence so that they're able to do what they want, and they aren't limited by disability into adulthood. And so it really, it's a really special experience, and currently, we send most of our students to 287. We still consider them our students as they go to 287. But one of the things that I heard from the very first day that I started here was that our community of special education students and parents have a deep, deep desire to be able to have their own program so that students after high school are able to remain in the community, receive training, have work experiences, continue to develop their friendships right where they live. And so many of the parents, I hear them say, you know, I'm excited about housing available through the city, or I want to get a little mother-in-law's apartment on my house or whatever because I really want my child to build an adult future in Edina. And so that's something that I think really is a dream for our community. I do know that anytime you're adding a building or a school to a district, that there are a lot of factors that need to be considered. And so one of the things that we always think about, you know, is financially where things are at. And so that's something that we're looking at. But I think it's all of our hope. I'm sure the board, as well as our families, myself, that someday we will have our own transition program. When that time comes, I look forward to building it.
Great, thank you. And then the last thing is a comment. One of the best slides, moments on your slide was the grant money for the 20 paraprofessionals who can be, for training to get to their licensure for that. This is kind of a grow-your-own program that is commonplace in a lot of different districts throughout the state. I am so happy and so proud and compliment, yes, Anne Marie, but also for Edina in general wanting to continue to produce that. I'd love it to be an area where we lead in excellence about getting people into that program, seeing them through it, getting into transition into the licensure, and then become special education teachers within our district. That is wonderful, that is so needed, like you said, across the country. Everyone's got to pull, do their part to make that happen, but trying to lead in that area is so important. I'm glad that we found the resources to help us with that. It's just a critical element that I think the community at large needs to understand how incredible, we can't just go and hire people to fill this problem, we're going to have to grow them ourselves. That's an issue at 287, that's an issue at a lot of districts. I was really pleased to see that, where we are on that update here in Edina. So thank you very much for that.
My pleasure.
Just a quick question that Director Birdman brought up about the non-public school kids. Are they included in the data metrics plan? Are those, are they excluded from the data metrics numbers that you had presented earlier?
So our, our non-public students last year began participating in Fastbridge screening, so their numbers would be included. I would want to clarify with Bethany, they had to set it up in a special way because we didn't want to, we can only set it up by certain entities, and they didn't want to lose the validity of school-wide data based upon the non-public schools. And so I need to just double check, but I know last year was the first year that they started, started with the Fastbridge.
Thank you. They are not included in our data for data metrics plans, so their data is not impacting the data that is published. However, they did set them up so that they do, we are monitoring.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jody, for this report. I have a comment and then a follow-up. You mentioned the Minnesota Student Survey, and since that is a piece of monitoring mental health, I was wondering, as we think about what we put on our data metrics plan, we use our Panorama data, but those of you who know that survey better, if there's information on that that would be helpful for us as another data point of how our students are reporting their mental health, that might be something we could add to the data metrics plan at some point. So that was just a comment. And then I believe that there is an upcoming open house for Project Search. There is.
Is that right?
Yes, January 14th.
Okay, and I know those of us on SEEK heard about it, but maybe the whole board can get that information because if anyone's interested in going and seeing what that amazing program is like.
Yeah, it would be wonderful to have anyone who's interested come and attend. And so it's the evening of January 14th, I'll get the exact times out to you. But what we do is we're really right now reaching out to students who we think would be excellent candidates to participate in Project Search. And so the students will come, and then we really have a showcase where we'll have our current interns really highlighting the work that they do, talking about what they've learned, what they want to do afterwards. Last year when we went, we were able to partner with another school district because it was our first year, and so we didn't have anything to showcase. So we worked with the Fairview Ridge's hospital team, and one of the students had just gotten a job working as a casual, and I don't really understand what that means because I work in education, not the medical field, but apparently that means that they're a paid employee. So it was really great to be able to have, to see the students' success and their growth, and just talking about how they have these career plans and goals. And the medical industry has so many jobs, and they so, so badly want to work with our students. And Fairview Southdale, I can't thank them enough, they've really rolled out the red carpet for our students with their director coming and welcoming the students, and they gave them a beautiful sunny space in the cardiac wing. And they really, really want our students to come and work within the healthcare field, whether it's one of their nursing homes or their clinics or their hospitals. And so our students are getting these great transferable skills and just feel really wanted, appreciated, and it's great to see our community valuing our students the way they do.
Well, thank you. And yes, since we voted on that last year and it's fresh in people's mind, it might be something nice for us to see. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on, our last discussion item. Normally, Ms. Allenberg, who would have taken over as the policy chair, would be leading us through this, but I'm going to go ahead and start us out. We have, I'm going to invite up Assistant Superintendent Nate Swenson, and he is going to talk to us about Policy 514, which is Bullying Prohibition.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg, members of the board, Dr. Stanley. With your...
I answer to anything, so.
Thank you, Chair Gabler, members of the board, Superintendent Stanley. I actually have two policies, and with your permission, Chair Gabler, if we could do them together, that would be great. And the reason I suggest that is at Policy Committee, we actually had a very small conversation about the idea of even combining 514 with 526. We pivoted off of that, but they're relatively well-connected with one another. Just to start, these policies both were reviewed by principals, APs, Alex Hatstrom, Dr. Leland, Jody Remzing, Sonia Saylor, and we had a little attorney involvement as well, just to get clarification about some different questions that came up. In the end, there were not a lot of substantive changes that were, that were made to either one of the policies. Most of the changes were language cleanup, specifically around defining report taker, things like that. So not a lot of changes to either one of these policies, but there was definitely good discussion about them both. So with that, what questions might you have about either one of them?
I have a question. Earlier this year, Dr. Hatstrom had brought this policy sort of to our attention, noting that the form at the end of the bullying policy might not get used as much as it potentially could. Do you know how many roughly, how often does it get used, the form for reporting?
First of all, you have a really great memory, because you are exactly right, he did make reference to that. Just first things first, the form is on the website, and I think it's really important to note too that as a part of that presentation, you may recall that we talked about the Sandy Hook Promise.
That was part of my next question, yeah.
Yeah, and the great news about that is we just recently signed an MOU with them, and we will be launching the Sandy Hook Promise next school year. So that's really, really exciting because it takes the burden off of the school district to be the 24-hour, seven-days-a-week report taker, basically, and will escalate things at the right time to the right people. So we're super excited about that. So to be honest with you, we haven't put a lot of time into doing much with the form that exists online, other than making sure that it's, the right people get the form. He, Alex uncovered some interesting things when he started delving into that. So that's been corrected, it's available online, and we'll have a far better solution next school year.
That's great, that is exactly what I was wondering about, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Swenson. All right, then I will welcome up Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, to talk to us about Policy 520, and then after that, she'll talk to us about Policy 601. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Gabler, Dr. Stanley, board members, community members and colleagues. I'm starting with 520. So I should say, thank you, thanks for the clarification. So 520, the main work on this policy was done to ensure clarity of the purpose as well as alignment with MSBA. We recognize there was a lot of language in the MSBA policy that was not in ours, so we did a crosswalk with other policies to make sure things were covered that needed to be within other policies and that we added anything that was not covered in other policies. So the purpose is to really provide clarity on the policy around using student surveys to obtain student opinions and information about students. And then you'll see that in Section 3, the added sections, D, E, and F, are all from MSBA. And then the other thing to highlight with what I started with is in the cross-reference section, we added policies that cover other components of what was missing in MSBA. And then the other piece that you'll see is just some minor edits throughout. For example, where we have parent, we added slash guardian and some, some details like that. So are there questions or feedback?
All right, seeing none, this will come forward for action next month. And then 601, Educational Competencies.
Okay, so this policy really is a technical correction that we made in Section 5H to reflect the recent changes in our graduation credits that were made. So we just wanted to make sure all policies reflected the correct language in that, and there wasn't confusion in our community. So you'll see that with starting, as we've noted in all areas as best as we can, starting with the class of 2028, that there will be 44 graduation requirements, and that is in Section 4H, 5H. So that is the only piece that was added here. Questions or feedback on that?
And board members, 601, the Policy Committee decided, we have the, as a board, we have a latitude to do what's called a rapid review, and that's for policies like this where because we changed graduation requirements, there's just a minor little tweak we have to make. So instead of sending it through the multiple-month process, we can review and take action in the same meeting. So you'll see this one come up for action this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you.
One note before we move on to action items. At our policy meeting in December, Policy 510, which is Open Enrollment, came up for discussion. And as we dug into it, and it was a robust conversation with lots of people around the table, it was decided that we are going to bring 510 to a work session for the entire board to discuss because there's some of the processes in there that we just haven't been updated for a couple of years, and so we want to make sure that the whole board has a discussion around that topic. So you'll see that coming at some work session soon. Okay, moving on to action items. Do I have a motion to approve the audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we have Director of, what is your title? Facilities?
Business.
Business. Mert, what are...
Good evening, Chair Gabler, members of the school board and public. Earlier tonight, you received a presentation from our audit partner, Mr. Bill Lauer from MMKR, who discussed the fiscal year 2024 audit results. This action is a result of our amended Policy 704, which was amended, I believe, in April of 2023, which now requires that the school board formally approve the assigned portion of the fund balance. These are fund balances that are recommended by the administration for assignment for the subsequent school year. Those categories include the severance and OPEB assigned fund balance, a fund balance set aside for our Paid Family Medical Leave Act, which begins in fiscal year 27, a fund balance to support the costs of unemployment insurance for those school-term employees that receive those funds, as well as department and site carryover from donations that those sites have accrued over the years. The recommended action is before you.
Mert, I have a question.
Sure.
So are we, it looks like...
Excuse me, the action on the agenda is for the audited results. So the assignment that you just talked about, is that a part of that, or is that a separate action?
Both of those actions are part of the recommendation, if you look at the agenda sheet.
Okay, great.
So the second part of that sentence.
All right, do we have any questions, board members? All right, thank you. Then we will now vote to approve the audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024 is approved. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve electric school bus acquisition?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right.
Chair Gabler, members of the school board, we've been kind of formally discussing this potential of acquiring a couple of electric school buses since the October work session, I believe, and we're kind of at the final stages of the financing discussion of that conversation. As it stands, we've received two separate EPA grants, both in the amount of $200,000 for a total of $400,000 to acquire two new school buses. The $400,000 has to be used to acquire two, not one, with the cost of an electric school bus currently at about $400,000. What that means is to acquire two buses, it's about an $800,000 capital outlay, offset by $400,000 in grant proceeds, leaving the district with a balance of $400,000 that we need to pay to acquire those two brand-new school buses. At our December Finance Committee meeting, we compared the cost of electric school buses acquired under a fleet electrification as a service contract arrangement against the proposition of continuing our current operations, which is to run diesel buses, so acquiring two new diesel buses. And when we looked at a 10-year discounted cash flow analysis, the acquisition of the two electric school buses under the service arrangement with a vendor that replied to our RFP would cost about $781,942 over those 10 years versus $681,698 for the two diesel school buses, which we would be paying for upfront in cash from the district's operating capital fund. It was a really robust conversation at the Finance Committee meeting over, actually two meetings, both November and December, and we kind of reached a consensus that the additional funds required to put into place two electric school buses would not be something that we would be recommending to the school board absent additional funds via grants, donations, et cetera. Luckily, at the same time that conversation was, was going, the State of Minnesota Department of Commerce opened up their electric school bus grant, which can actually be combined with the federal grant. Were we to be awarded that grant, the capital component of the electric school bus acquisition would actually go away. We'd be left with the service portion that we would be working with a vendor for, which is Highland, and the cost of that proposition would actually be less than the district buying two new diesel school buses. And so were we to receive that award, I think the Finance Committee was, was comfortable moving forward with a contract that was contingent upon that happening. We'll get the result of that grant, I believe, on January 20th, somewhere in that timeframe, but we thought we would bring this forward now since we kind of have all the information we need to move forward. The recommended action is before you.
And if I could add one more thing, Director Witterd. The agreement is contingent upon us receiving the additional grant funds.
Absolutely, the agreement is contingent upon that. The contract was written in that way. It's been reviewed by our attorneys. It's in the board packet for you to review. Also, it's important to know at this time, we've not spent a single cent other than some sweat equity at this point in pursuit of electric buses, so we have no obligation to anybody at this point.
Board members, what questions do you have about this? Dr. Birdman.
I would just, as the Chair of the Finance Committee up until earlier tonight, that what I think is really important for the community to understand is that, you know, the discussion that was going on was not about whether we believed in, in the electrification of our fleet or the value proposition of sustainability and going electric, so on and so forth. That was not, in any part of the conversation was that being talked about because I think almost everybody, if not everybody, believes that's the future, that's where we want to go and we want to be good stewards from that standpoint. The hard part for the fiscal responsibility and the fiduciary responsibility to the district and the taxpayers was, was spending an additional hundred and something thousand dollars of the right course to take. So when we were going back and forth with this, it was trying to get to the understanding of where did that line cross and so we were able to do so. The wonderful part was with community support who, who came to us and reminded us of the state possibly having additional grants. We jumped right on that, the team jumped right on that, not I, but you guys did to work that out. And then the Finance Committee was able to then really look at and say, gosh, well, if we can get to this point, having just the service contract with, with Highlands really enables us to a low-cost point for us to transition to the electrified process with two buses. We don't have a lot of infrastructure costs built into us doing that. It then made a lot more sense. And so I just want to make sure we're clear when we vote tonight, is that we're voting to enter into this agreement with, with Highlands with the, with the assumption that only when we get confirmation of the state grants, that we would then go forward with this. We would walk away from this contract if that's not the case. So I just want to make sure you guys understand that, but also the community understands that that's the action we're asked to do tonight. I think this is a great solution and hopefully it all works out to where we can actually go down this path. I know this has been a, a huge thing in our community and our student population and everybody else and I've been told many times before that United Public Schools is the largest emitter of carbon in our community and so this is just a small token in that direction. Hopefully it's just for years to come that we can make the finances work to make that work. So I just want to make sure there was a clear understanding of that, not just to my colleagues on the board, but also to the community. And I'm, I love the fact that we had the community involvement to help us, guide us further into making that happen and that we were able to execute that. So kudos to Mert and the team and everyone, I know Dr. Leland was part of this too, that trying to find the grants to be able to make this happen was really great. So, Dr. Stanley, thank you for the team's effort in trying to find a solution so we could say yes.
Mert, I had a question. I noticed on the RFP that Highlands has worked with, the Highland Bus Fleet has worked with Red Lake and in Jackson Public Schools. Have we at any point reached out to them to hear about their experience with both Highlands and just electric buses in general?
You know, I actually tried to catch the Jackson Public Schools official when I was on a business trip in Nashville. I unfortunately was unable to connect with them. With Red Lake, I believe they, they don't have their school buses on, on the street yet, so to speak. They actually did not have a school bus facility that would accommodate the charging of school buses. So they're a little bit different case than us because we're, we're kind of fully prepared to get electric buses out there, but we'll definitely connect with them once they get operational to understand how those are, are working for them.
And I echo really briefly what Director Birdman said. I thank you and the people who have worked on this because this is something, everything that Michael said, this was, has been a topic that I think bubbled up through the board and the community and I really appreciate the work and I think it speaks to when communities and schools work together, great things can happen. So, thank you. Okay. We, do I have a, no? We already voted. We will now vote to approve the electric school bus acquisition contingent on acquiring the Minnesota Department of Commerce Electric School Bus Grant. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The electric school bus acquisition contingent on acquiring the Minnesota Department of Commerce Electric School Bus Grant is approved. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Secondary Course English Language Arts Year Two Recommendations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm welcome up Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, to talk to us about these recommendations.
Phone, thank you, as I dig through my materials. In front of us, we had a discussion in November at a board workshop and then a discussion again at a board meeting in December. There are some slight changes to this that I wanted to point out before we take action and they are aligned with some changes in the college and the schools courses at the U of M. So this year, we're currently offering a writing studio, college and the schools class to our students. That's no longer going to be offered because the U of M is no longer offering it. They are replacing it with a university writing class and that will be for only 12th graders. So we would like to, so you'll, you may have noticed that in the new course section, that writing stu, university writing is added and then the dropped section, the current writing studio is dropped. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if there are any questions or comments on that or any of the other components in the report.
Was the writing whatever it used to be? Was that offered to only 12th graders as well?
No, that was open to 11th and 12th, I think. It wasn't just 12th graders.
Okay. Same credits?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Still work closely with the U of M, same kind of programming. Next year would actually be a pilot year with the U of M and then I, I would anticipate, we'd anticipate that all things go well and it rolls into a regular course effort at the U of M.
Board members, do you have any questions? Then we will now vote to approve the 2025-26 Secondary Course English Language Arts Year Two Recommendations. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The 2025-26 Secondary Courses English Language Arts Year Two Recommendation is approved and I want to again say thank you to you and the team of English teachers who worked very hard on this and have been.
Yes, thank you for acknowledging that. I appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Secondary Courses General Change Recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and Jody's here to talk to us about this too.
Okay, this was also discussed at a workshop in November and then a board meeting in December and there have been no changes made to these recommendations and just seeing if there's any questions before a final decision is made.
Mr. Birdman, did you say you had a question? Okay, okay. We will now vote to approve the 2025-26 Secondary Courses General Change Recommendations. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The 2025-26 Secondary Courses General Change Recommendation is approved. Do I have a motion to approve international travel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Jody's here to talk to us about some international travel opportunities for our students.
Okay, so in accordance with Policy 538, there are seven international student travel experiences that we've discussed at a previous November workshop as well as a December meeting and there have been no changes to any of these recommendations since the last meeting in December. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, seeing none, then we will vote to approve the slate of seven international travel trips. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The proposed slate of international travel trips is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the Legislative Action Committee Priorities?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dan Arum and Cheryl Berry, our two board members leading the district's Legislative Action Committee are here to tell us about these priorities.
These were presented last month for review from the board. If there's any additional questions related to that, there have been no material changes to the platform.
All right, seeing no questions, we will now vote to approve the Legislative Action Committee Priorities. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The Legislative Action Committee Priorities are approved. Do I have a motion to approve Policies 504, 518, 601, 607, 613, and 628?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The only things that have changed in these policies from our December discussion, 504, which is about student dress and appearance, went back to committee to just have the addition of medical masks added to indicating that medical masks are permissible as needed. And the other one I wanted to draw to your attention was what was spoke about before with 601. That is the policy that we just discussed in discussion, so now it's up for action. So are there, otherwise it's the same policies that you saw last month? Any questions? All right, we will now vote to approve Policies 504, 518, 601, 607, 613, 628. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Policies 504, 518, 601, 607, 613, 628 have been approved. All right, we are moving on to the board leadership and committee updates. Director Arum.
Just an LAC update. At the end of January, we're going to have our LAC breakfast, which is on Friday, sorry, Thursday the 20th, or Friday the 24th, Friday the 24th in the morning, 7:30 here at the community center. The public is welcome to attend. We have invitations out to all of our elected representatives and so we hope for a good discussion and some good presentations about their priorities as well as our priorities.
Thank you. Any other committee updates? I did want to take a moment for the community to just note that in the information part of the board's packet, there's a summary of Dr. Stanley's mid-year evaluation and I just wanted to take a moment to read a little bit of that and to recognize Dr. Stanley's work within our schools. The comments I'm going to read say, "Dr. Stanley displays many strengths and the board feels that she has met or is on track to meet each of her goals for the 2024-2025 school year. Superintendent Stanley brings great vision to her work and she combines this vision with her ability to provide leadership to improve and enhance student learning in district schools. The board and Dr. Stanley will continue to strengthen their partnerships to help ensure that district priorities are aligned with the district's strategic plan as well as work to further refine the timing and process of board superintendent work. We thank her for her work." All right, Dr. Stanley, do you have any updates you'd like to share?
I do have a few and they are just a couple of accolades. This first one is for work from community education, comes from Kim Odie, and this is to Tom, our facilities coordinator. She says, "Tom, Kelly and I want to thank you so much for working with us to find a new home for the MWC Holiday Market on Saturday. I trust that you'll hear that we left the gym in good shape, although the janitors had plenty of trash to empty. The event was a great success in part because of the enthusiasm we heard from vendors and shoppers for the site. As a result, we believe that we could place an offer, we, we could be in place to offer five scholarships next spring due to being able to host more vendors. Thank you so much. We appreciate your partnership." I can't even imagine how many requests come through. I don't know, Emery, if you even know how many requests come through for facilities? Do you have an idea? Hundreds, thousands maybe? Yeah, and our facilities group is just so flexible and especially, they often get calls from community members where something has happened and they need to get a space right away. And that is that partnership that we have with our community that really wanted to recognize. And then finally, if you could look around with, at the lovely art that is in the room, this show represents some of the fantastic artwork created by sixth, seventh, and eighth graders enrolled in visual arts classes at Valley View Middle School. All of the artwork was created in the first semester of this year and ranges in media from watercolors to collage and in subject matter from cityscapes to abstract and they really hope that you enjoy their work.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will vote to approve our agenda, or we will vote to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion has passed and the meeting has adjourned.